All right, we'll call the meeting of the City Council to order and state that the notice for this meeting was duly posted.
Christian man.
There's a quorum of City Council here, everyone's present, if you will stand. Our Thurgood Marshall, Air Force Junior ROTC, will present our colors and lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
Please join me for the same pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here they come. All right, guys, come on up here and stand behind me. I just need it. Oh, guys, come on. Come on back here. Act like you like each other. You will before the year's over. You'll be hugging each other, singing kumbaya. Come on, guys, get back here. The tall ones can get on the back row and the short ones can get on the front row. Come on, don't be afraid, get back here. Back here! Goodness gracious. Wait a minute, Mama, what are you doing? Yeah, uh-huh. Okay. Mama's always gotta get pictures. No, I'm gonna name them, and then as, after I name them, you can hand them out to them as we name them. Some are not here. All right, but I'm gonna name all the kids, these are kids that, uh, kids, they're young adults, not kids anymore, they're young adults who have decided that they want to serve on the Mayor's Youth Commission this year. They have no earthly idea what that duty entails. It's picking up trash out of ditches, some cleanup day, y'all didn't know it, did you? It's marching in the Snow Fest Parade, marching in the Snow Fest Parade, not on the float. Some of these kids wanna get on these floats during the Snow Fest Parade, helping with the Easter egg hunt. Okay? How many of you are returning? See, they can, you all can tell by that picture. The rest of you are new, well, welcome. In a minute, you're gonna take an oath, and it's the same oath that every board, commission, and us as council people take when we serve the city. You need to understand what your responsibility is as a Mayor's Youth Commission. You represent the city, you represent this council, you represent me, 'cause your name, my name is on your group, in everything that you do. I have no earthly idea why you were chosen, why you wanted to serve, and over the years, and this will be the 20th or 21st group of young people who have served on the Mayor's Youth Commission. And I have kids, as you can tell by this group, that represents our entire community. It's kinda odd that each year, regardless of how they're chosen or how they volunteer, they end up being a mirror image of this community from a diversity standpoint. You know, they all look different, don't they? Yeah. They all have different reasons for being here, but whatever that reason is, young people, you have a great responsibility this next year. One of the things that you have a responsibility to do is to attend and participate. Now, I have kids, I have a teacher as a child, so I know that young people have homework, I know that they have band, I know they have football, I know they have church, I know they have scouts, they have other responsibilities other than attending sometimes the Mayor's Youth Commission. All that I ask that you do is let us know when you cannot attend, so that that absence is excused. If you miss three of them in a row and they're unexcused, you're no longer on the Mayor's Youth Commission. Understand? Because you've all volunteered to participate and be a part of this program. Throughout the year, you're gonna be guided and you're gonna have projects to work on. One of the things that I will do early with you, and I want you to start thinking about it now, is I'm always curious about what things affect our youth in our community. Because, believe it or not, you represent a larger part of the population than the adults do. There's more of you than there are of us, did you know that? Yeah. So it's, I know that our police officers want to know what your concerns are. You know, we have some ordinances and things in place, we have juvenile curfew. How many of you know what juvenile curfew is? Oh. You have a rude awakening. You do not know what juvenile curfew is. Huh? What time is it? Nine? I wish. What time? Eleven on Friday.
Twelve on midnight.
Midnight. Guys, let me tell you what, you better learn what that is, because that is a city ordinance. That is a law. And those guys back there in those uniforms, if they catch you out on the street and they stop you, and you are not having a school activity, a church activity, or you have an adult with you, you will have an adult with you very shortly, when they knock on your parents' front door and introduce you to them, and hand them the ticket for you violating juvenile curfew. Juvenile curfew's there for a reason, and the reason is, is to protect you all, is to make sure that when you're on the streets in our city at night, you know that the little gangsters are not riding around wanting to do bad things to you. Because those guys back there in the blue are gonna stop them, and the wannabe gangsters who are out there that aren't abiding by the law, I guess I believe are gonna stop them to make sure that when you all are out there going from work or whatever it is, that you feel safe on the street. And that's why we have juvenile curfew. If you don't wanna abide by juvenile curfew, go to Sugar Land, they don't have one. But when you come back in this city, you're gonna get stopped. So if you live in Sugar Land, that's fine. Right, Daniel?
Yes.
They'll adopt on one of these days. As a matter of fact, I don't understand why they don't have it. But anyway, guys, it's your responsibility to be good stewards and good citizens, part of this role as a Mayor's Youth Commission. I cannot tell you how many letters I have written to colleges for young people who are going to college, that this role as a Mayor's Youth Commission was so important to them, that I got to write a letter to their college telling them how important it was for them to serve on the Mayor's Youth Commission. So take it seriously. I'm very fortunate that I've got people like Don and Ebony and our Parks Department that are gonna work with you throughout the year and make sure that you have projects and things to keep you busy. Again, I don't know, you know, where you're from, don't really care, the only thing I'm concerned about is that you participate, so I'm gonna do my best to read these names. Guys, there are 76 languages spoken in Fort Ben ISD alone. Some of them are on this list. And I can tell you right now, I don't speak but one, and I don't speak it very well. So if I butcher your name, ignore it. We'll learn it, or I'll get Don over here to introduce you. I'm gonna read all these young people's names, and I know that some of them are not here. If you are here, raise your hand, and Don's gonna pass out an oath that I'm gonna read in a moment that you're going to take. So first one is Brandon Austin. Makira Andress Morrison. Houston Everett II. If y'all are here, just say here, so we know it. Miracle Baker. Huh, Miracle, right? Okay. Speak up. Play like you're answering your mama. How about Chloe Benson? Chloe, all right. Amani Boston. There you go. Ooh. Al Broussard. Do we know Al? How about Zoe Broussard? I know, I don't know how we got the city manager's two children on here, but they're on here. Anya Carter Jones. Callie Clark. Amber Cooper White. Jocelyn Dang, or is it Jocklin? Huh? Jocelyn, okay. Jayo, or is it Jayo Davis? Jao, I said it right there, didn't I? Janadella Cueva. Shivani Dashi. Samo, all right. Eda Barampel. How close is that? Close, but anyway. Huh? That's it? Okay. And then Smitha, I'm not gonna repeat it again, are they brothers? Huh? That's you? Attaboy. Is the other one your brother? Your sister? Okay. Andy Garza. Hey, Andy. Sergio Avengarza. Kirsten Gillum. Sadart Gua. Is that right?
Yep.
Oh, man, I'm getting good. Andrew Gilbo. I got it, didn't I, Andrew? Luke Gilbo. Brianna Harris. Castione Harris. Jade Hager. Jade here. Jaylen Hayler. Danny Hurtel. Tatiana Hughes. I got you, Tatiana. Anisha Etikula. Caroline Jemond. And Kevin. And Cassia Bailey? Huh? DeBailey? Well, I thought that Jay was silent, I'm sorry. All right. Lenaya Johnson. Rachel Kuravila. Alexia Lewis. Danielle Long. And Jordan Long. Tamisha Lundey. And Timothy Lundey. Cassandra Martinez. Ribu Nag. And Rick Nag. Very good. Ray Nesherl. Janela Ukangwa. Huh? Okay, Kangu. All right, I got you. Caleb Pete. Ryan Richardson. Anthony Sims. David Sims. Smitha Tamarabella. Is that right? Jessica Thomas. Laren Turner. Vance Bond. Shawshank Vuru. Is that right? Sierra Washington. Elizabeth Zoo. Yeah, I knew. And Howard. Hey, gosh, I got through that list, man. Didn't butcher you too bad. Did we miss anybody? You'll learn this year. All right, guys, I told you the names, so I want you to raise your right hand and repeat after me, I'm gonna say aye, you're gonna say aye, and then you're gonna state your name, and then you're gonna repeat after me, all right? Aye?
Aye!
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That to the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
I will faithfully participate.
I will faithfully participate.
In and execute the duties and responsibilities.
In and execute the duties and responsibilities.
Of being a member of the Missouri, of the Mayor's Youth Commission.
Of being a member of the Mayor's Youth Commission.
Of the city of Missouri City, Texas.
Of the city of Missouri City, Texas.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I can't tell you that it's been a century anymore where they don't have that program. I know y'all would like that, though. You ever watch Gears of Strength? Huh? You got a lot of seniors, give me your senior. Oh, your last year to serve, huh? We have any freshmen? Any middle schoolers? Lucky there. Guys, let me tell you what, I have, you know, over the years, and I hope you do the same thing, started in middle school and went all the way through high school. I've got brothers and sisters, I've got cousins, I've got, I don't have any moms and dads yet that I'm aware of. But in 20 years, it's amazing I don't, but, you know, guys, this is something that I hope you look forward to, hope you have a lot of fun this year, being in this group. Just remember what I said, participation is key. If you don't participate, you're not gonna get anything out of this program, but if you do, I promise you it'll be rewarding. Don and people volunteering to help you are gonna involve you in projects this year that are gonna make better young people out of you, because, you know what, you're the future of this city. You're the future city councils and mayors and boards and commissions, so what you're learning here is gonna be key to what you do in the future as part of this community. So enjoy yourselves, have a great year, and look forward to having time with you. Thank you. We need a picture. Moms and dads, you can take pictures, guys, get up your clothes. You know, you may, some of you may have to squat down, you know? You can squat down and still get up. Ebony's not here?
Yes.
Ebony, get up here.
She's always hiding.
Where's Ebony? Going downstairs? Get Ebony up here. Come on up here, Ebony.
She's what makes this work.
Ebony's gonna be your mama this year, and let me tell you what, you better pay attention to your mama, okay? Because your mama will straighten you out. Don't be afraid, get up your clothes. We wanna make sure everybody gets their picture. Y'all be on, you know you'll be on news tomorrow, C-SPAN.
Official picture for our staff.
No. You'll be on MCTV.
Turn this off and on.
You go on MCTV probably tomorrow, day after tomorrow, and see yourself.
I know.
Now, tell all your friends and neighbors that you're a TV star.
Oh, you got a little.
Yeah, ladies, Joe bring out the camera. All right, yeah, thank you.
Don't wanna lose the work that any of y'all serve.
Is that gonna take a council vote?
Are these your brothers?
Or we change it in another 40 years?
This is what Maria tells me, y'all forgot to, they'd be, y'all would never turn them on, and so you'd have whole meetings where nobody could hear you, because you wouldn't turn them on, so that's why they're always on. If you wanna speak, yeah, the concession.
We did it.
You weren't even here when.
I said you can't be trusted, but you can't be trusted to turn them on.
We give them an opportunity to clear the room. Jeff, you wanna come up? And whoever else you got. Yeah. All right, chief, y'all get that door? I'm not sure this is even on. Can you hear this? Is it on? Okay. Doesn't sound like it's on. Has some proclamations I wanna read. The first one says that whereas about one in four people live in conditions that harm their health, safety, and prosperity and opportunities, and one in 300 Fort Ben County residents are either homeless, live in substandard, or unaffordable housing, and whereas adequate housing is vitally important to the health of the world's economics, communities, and populations, and home ownership is a form of wealth accumulation through equity and forced savings from mortgage repayment, and whereas good housing attracts economic investment and development and contributes to thriving school systems, community organizations, and civic activism, and safe homes and neighborhoods help to build social stability and security. And whereas Fort Ben Habitat for Humanity is one of the 1,500 Habitat Communities in the United States, and in more than 70 countries worldwide, from Argentina to Zimbabwe, that compromise Habit for Humanity International, and whereas on World Habitat Day, which is the first Monday of October, Fort Ben Habitat for Humanity joins the United Nations and organizations around the world in raising awareness, education, and mobilizing individuals and communities to take action on the current global housing crisis. Now therefore, I, Al, and Owen, on behalf of the City Council and all the citizens of Missouri City, do hereby proclaim October the 21st, 2013, as World Habitat Day in Missouri City, and commend its observance to all citizens in celebration of its significance and impact in our community. And Jeff Anderson with Habitat is here to receive this, but I must tell you that the city's gonna do its part Friday, in that we're going to participate in a build for Habitat and show our part of trying to be part of the community. As a volunteer like myself, who's volunteered for many, many years for Habitat for Humanities, and having built houses for many, many years, I know the importance that this organization means to this community. I've also been there to see those families who are getting their first home, and the responsibility, and this is not a gift, let me remind everybody, Habitat for Humanities, it's not a gift, these people have a mortgage, they have taxes to pay, they have a responsibility to take care of that home. If they don't do any of those, they lose the home just like anyone else does. They have sweat equity, everyone who gets a Habitat home, it used to be 300 hours, I don't know how many it is, still 300 hours. The person who gets that Habitat home, they have to put in 300 hours of sweat equity on other houses as well as their own before they can get this home. So it's a way, I think most of you probably remember years ago when Jimmy Carter, I guess, first was organizing Habitat for Humanities, and it's been now a growing thing, and I know that we have communities we've built in Rosenberg, I know the last houses that I was involved with was in Teal Run, and I don't know where this one is now.
We're building in Rosenberg.
In Rosenberg again, but anyway, Jeff, you may wanna say some comments, but on behalf of the city of Missouri City and its citizen, we're pleased to be a part of your program.
Let's keep it brief. The mayor is a big supporter of Habitat for Humanity, and we've called on him on many occasions and from a professional and from a civic capacity, and we really appreciate what he has done and the challenge that he has brought forward, especially with the employees of Missouri City coming out and participating in a build. Matter of fact, I challenged Mayor Thompson over in Sugar Land, I said, "You're being outdone right now." And they haven't done anything yet, but you can poke them a little bit. But Habitat, very simply, we've been around for 20 years in Fort Ben County, probably one of the best kept secrets, and we're trying to get the word out that we do exist. We've built over 70 homes for families, and basically, we're taking families that are living in substandard conditions, it's really sad when you see the families that we're selecting from, and we're getting them out of those conditions, usually living under the thumb of a slumlord, and we're putting them in their first home, and everybody knows the pride of home ownership, and you should see the looks on their faces when we hand them the keys to their house for the first time. It helps the family, they generally progress up the economic ladder, gets them out of the bottom, the kids get into better schools, the kids do better, and the trickle-down effect goes on for generations to come, so it's just, it's wonderful to be a part of the organization, and we thank you.
Oh, no, thank you. Back here, let's get a picture. Y'all are invited Friday to Bell, by the way. Does your hand fit a hammer?
It has before.
We have hammers, and nails. By the way, they also have a re, yeah. Jeff did not mention it, but Habitat has a resale facility up in Stafford, and you can either donate building supplies to them for resale, or if you're looking for shelving, doors, windows, I mean, you just, whatever you, whatever you want, there are a lot of contractors out here in this area who come and buy supplies from the resale store that's on the other side of the railroad track, used to be Stallman Lumber Company, so if you have building materials and stuff that you'd like to donate to them, they're always willing to take that, and...
Furniture, appliances.
Yeah, and this is part of how they fund their deal, but if you're looking for anything, building material, lumber stuff, it's a great buy, yeah. Very good. All right, this one, I was gonna get Don and Floyd and Jerry down here, but I guess I'm gonna have to do this, this is...
Easy there.
This proclamation, when I read it, you'll understand why, it says that whereas social security remains the bedrock of retirement income for the great majority of the people of the United States, but was never intended by Congress to be the sole source of retirement income for families, and whereas all workers, including public and private sector employees, employers of tax-exempt organizations, and self-employed individuals can benefit from increased awareness of the need to develop personal budgets and financial plans, including retirement savings strategies, and to take advantage of the availability of tax-preferred savings vehicles to assist them in saving for retirement, and whereas financial literacy is an important factor in the United States... financial literacy is an important factor in the United States workers' understanding of the true need to save for retirement, and whereas saving for one's retirement is a key component to overall financial health and security during those retirement years, and the importance of financial literacy in planning one's retirement must be advocated. And whereas many employees have available to them through their employer's access to defined benefit and defined contribution plans to assist them in preparing for retirement, yet many of them may not take advantage of such plans at all and to the full extent allowed by such plans as prescribed by federal law. Now therefore, I, Allen Owen, on behalf of the City Council and the citizens of Missouri City, do here, do hereby proclaim the week of October twentieth to October twenty-sixth as Save for Retirement Week in Missouri City, and urge all of our citizens to seriously evaluate their plan for retirement this week. Very important. So, you know, it speaks of literacy. People don't realize it, but there's last count forty-six thousand people in, in Fort Bend County who cannot read nor write their name, that are illiterate, that this means a lot to them because no one's really telling them what they should do to protect their future. All right, I don't think there was anybody here to accept that, is there? I accept it on behalf of the four of us on retirement. All right, this says that whereas change is constant and affects all cities, towns, suburbs, counties, boroughs, townships, rural areas, and other places, and whereas community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be meaningfully involved in making choices that determine the future of their community, whereas the full benefits of planning requires public officials and citizens who understand, support, and demand excellence in planning and plan implementation, and whereas the month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month throughout the United States of America and its territories, and whereas the American Planning Association and its professional institute, the American Institute of Certified Planners endorse National Community Planning Month as an opportunity to highlight the contributions sound planning and plan implementation make to the quality of our settlements and environment, and whereas we recognize the many valuable contributions made by professional community and regional planners of the City of Missouri City, Texas, and extend our heartfelt thanks for the continued commitment to public service by these professionals. Now therefore, I, Allen Owen, on behalf of the City Council and the citizens of Missouri City, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2013 as Community Planning Month in the City of Missouri City in conjunction with the celebration of National Community Planning Month. Anybody here to accept that? Where is our planner? Oh, Mr. Smith, would you come up?
It's a second break planner. I had planned Jennifer accepting it, however Jennifer's under the weather today. The, the role of planning is significant in each community. What it has done for Missouri City has established a character and a quality of life, and we strive every day to maintain that in the planning department and to bring you a better community through planning.
Very good. Thank you. We are honored tonight to have a former Sugar Land City Councilperson who now lives in Missouri City.
You're doing an advertisement.
Yes, I am. Uh, but anyway, Daniel has a presentation that, uh, he and his church would like to make, so.
I just want to say a few words. Do I have two hours?
As long as you want to.
You give a, you give a microphone to a politician, well, just like him, so.
When you bring checks, you can talk as long as you want.
No, 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 I just want to say thank you for the mayor and the members of council for serving this city so wonderful, making this a city, so wonderful city for, uh, for our church to grow. Fort Bend Community Church started about fifteen years ago in Missouri City. Uh, in the day one, we had about three hundred people, we, because of this wonderful city. We has been growing to, uh, about fifteen hundred people now, average weekly attendance in our church. Uh, we're so thankful for the city council, for, for the staff, for helping us all throughout our growth. Uh, we start out from one building, now we build to three buildings, and going through the process of getting permit and things like the nature, and I, we are very appreciative of the city staff for helping us. More importantly, actually, because City of Missouri City is such a safe city, so tonight we have a, a little check to present to our, uh, police department because in honor of Missouri City Police Department, making our city one of the safest city, right? Are we still one of the safest cities?
I moved here.
Yeah, that's why I moved from Sugar Land to Missouri City, okay? One of the safest city in the nation.
All right.
We're so thankful for the police department. So we have a little fund called Community Fund in our church. Every year, we, um, you know, select all the money and donate to, um, worthy cause, and to this year, we hopefully, we are, we pick, um, you know, Missouri City Police Department, and it's not a big check. Hopefully, next year will be a little bigger, but, uh, there's a little surplus fund, so there's, the mayor agreed that, um, smaller check is okay for, for us, right?
Well, um.
It's a little bigger.
How much is it actually? Uh, well, it's twenty-five hundred dollars instead of twenty-two. Next week, maybe it's low.
That's not a little check, Daniel.
Hey, Daniel, I thought you promised ten percent. Ten percent to the judge, and ten percent judge to the city.
Anyway, Jay, you got to go over here.
No. Why don't you do that? Judge is our community center. Maybe you stand in the middle.
Keep them organized, Daniel.
Yeah.
That's right, go ahead. You're in good shape. I'm taking your time. I know. Is that your phone?
No, that's not mine. No, no, no. The mic's easy to do. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Daniel.
Thank you.
Just claim about ten percent, mayor. Ten percent. Well, that's a, that's a start.
That's ten you don't play with.
Party ranking issues up.
Yeah.
The next thing we'd like to do is recognize the, uh, three parties, right? For National Night Out, and I'm going to pass the mic to, uh, Captain Williams and Yvette Kelly.
Evening. You know, every year, we have a National Night Out. It's an, an event where we try to bring the citizens out of their homes and into the neighborhood so they can meet one another and, uh, actually get to know the police officers in the communities. This year, we did something a little different, and we actually put together a competition for the best block party. So I would like to first thank everyone in each homeowners' association that actually participated in the National Night Out event. Uh, a special thanks to the three parties, to the three HOAs that actually won, uh, the competition. Participation in the National Night Out shows a dedication and a commitment to the safety and security of our city. And with you guys coming out and showing that dedication and, and commitment, it shows us that you want to be a part of the community, and you want to, to co-mingle with the police department and get to know the officers that serve you, and for that, we thank you. Okay? You coming out and participating with us shows that you want to help us help you, and again, we thank you for that. We look forward to next year's National Night Out and the competition, but for this year, we want to go ahead and recognize the three winners of the National Night Out Block Party Competition. I have here Officer Yvette Kelly, and she'll make those presentations.
Hi, how you guys doing? I lost my voice, uh, about, uh, three weeks ago with the mayor. We attended fourteen block parties. Uh, to kind of build on what, uh, Captain Williams stated, um, we're making this bigger and better. Uh, we had a kickoff that Saturday. We had all city council, uh, all city managers attended. It was awesome. Uh, the official National Night Out was October the first. I was, uh, at Target. Again, we had a, a great participation. So with that being said, the winners, the first person we'd like to recognize is Brightwater. Come on up. Okay. We'd like to present you with this plaque. Brightwater had twenty-two, uh, streets that participated and fifteen block parties, which is awesome, and we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank Diane Giltner, who is our organizer, who really works hard to, to rally the troops, and also our officers. Um, we see a lot of familiar faces, and I know personally that Ms. Yvette Kelly, she worked really hard, I met with her, but, uh, once again, thank your officers, they really work hard for us. Thank you.
And don't forget to mention the food. One of the best foods.
So you know, competition is stiff in Missouri City, or in, in Brightwater. We have a great, um, combination.
Danny, what do you have?
I forgot, but it was good.
We have a, um, we have a great variety of all the different cultures in our subdivision, so we're really proud. So come out and join us next time for National Night Out. Thank you.
Yeah, they have hot dogs combined with egg rolls. What a combination.
You guys stay up there, we'll take a group picture.
Over.
Thank you, Rose. The second party we'll, we'll like to recognize would be Creekmont subdivision. Is anyone from here Creekmont? Okay, no one in show for Creekmont, that's okay, but they will be recognized.
Planning next year's party?
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, the next person is going to be Ms. Eloise and Robert Torres. Uh, they had an awesome block party. Um, the address was one-one-one-three, uh, Blocker Lane. I have to think about it. There you go. They had a DJ.
I know, I saw it a while ago. Oh. Hunter's Point? Hunter's Point, Blocker Lane. Now Creekmont had the, Creekmont had the real Fargo State coat. A bouncing house. Man. It's a great idea. They had a real Fargo State coat. How they got it? I know, I know. Showing the cooperation. Yeah, but I'm going to tell you how hard it is. It must have been the little one. Was it the little one?
Yep.
Yeah. It's fifteen hundred dollars for the big one, that's why I asked. We get that one for Don's parade. Fifteen hundred bucks? I told Tommy next year, medical, they need to start later.
Next, next time I request on the motorcycle.
Well, thank you.
I, I do want to say that, uh, this is, before you get, was probably the best organized that we had had, and even all of them were good, but this was the best organized, and we were just talking, being taken around in the police cars was good, I didn't have to worry about speeding on my own or taking a chance of getting stopped, and, uh, Danny just announced next year, we're going on motorcycles.
Oh, that ought to be.
Two of you are.
You and I are not.
We would again like to thank everyone that participated.
You and I are going on a motorcycle, we're going to stay in the car.
I'm a riding home.
Yeah. I go with you.
Again, we'd like to thank everyone that participated, especially those that, that won, but make no mistake about it, everyone that participated, every party was actually outstanding. So we thank you for that, and we look forward to next year.
Thank you.
I bet we had, what, fifty-six total? Is that right?
It's a seven.
Sixty, we had it with sixty total parties in Missouri City, so that's outstanding. I think every single subdivision, street in the subdivisions all had it, food was great. Our biggest complaint is that it is over too soon.
Mosquitoes.
We can't make them all in that shorter period of time, so I know as Yvette and I were traveling around, some of those that are inside facilities, we're encouraging to start later and end later. Uh, those that are out in the yards, I understand why they can't, but, uh, you know, hopefully we can stretch this thing out and, and those of us who are out, because we'd all like to attend as many of these as we can, but obviously, we can't attend all of them, so we kind of break up. So if you didn't see us there, it's not because we didn't want to be there, it's because we were, we broke it up and, and each of us were going to different areas, so. Thank you all for doing that, though. It's very important that people get out and learn who their neighbors are, and it, it's important, these guys back here will tell you that you're the eyes and the ears that they don't have available to them every day, uh, so they learn a lot from that, so thank you. All right, item four, public comments. I did not have anyone sign up to make any public comments. Item five are staff reports, and this is a report on the Veterans Memorial Project. Our Parks and Rec Director Larry Foose.
Mayor and council? What we've done since the last time we talked about the Veterans Memorial is created a design competition for the Veterans Memorial. It's currently being advertised on the city website, and it's been sent to a few, uh, artists and landscape architects. I'll get to that in, in a coming slide. Uh, here are some text from the, from the guidelines. The memorial must stand as a tribute to the patriotic and courageous men and women who served this nation. This memorial should reflect the bravery, sacrifice, and strength that they gave to our country. Also in the guidelines, we have identified three potential locations. Uh, we're looking at Community Park, American Legion Park, and City Hall Complex. We didn't want to limit the artists by a specific location in this and to hinder any creativity that may, may come their way. In its submittal, we're also asking them to consider creativity, durability, sustainability, and feasibility, and their, uh, submittals will, uh, address the landscape, sculpture, lighting, and architectural slash artist, uh, elements of the, uh, memorial. Uh, here is a partial list of who the competition was sent to. Uh, we wanted to involve local folks, so the Fort Bend Independent School District, Fine Arts Director has forwarded this to, uh, the art classes in their middle school and high school. Uh, the Houston Arts Alliance was notified. And in a, in a more national level, the American Society of Landscape Architects, it's advertised on their website right now, and the Texas Society of Landscape Architects, they're also advertising for us, and, uh, sent it to every university in the state of Texas that has a landscape architecture program. And in addition to that, I've just numerous artists, uh, people I've come, come in contact with in the last three years that, that have an interest in things like this. I've received many calls and emails about it, some from, one from Canada, uh, an, an artist from West Virginia that deals in granite is going to, said he was going to submit a, a, a submittal, and, uh, I asked him, "How did you hear about this from, from Canada and from West Virginia?", and their reply was they Googled, uh, uh, "public art competitions", and we surfaced on that. Going forward, the submission deadline is November first. Uh, the, the Veterans Memorial Committee will meet shortly after that and review the submittals. Uh, we look to, uh, select a, a selection committee to finalize and, and pick a winner. We'll, we'll select a winning design in December, and from there, fundraising efforts will begin.
Why does it have to be so soon, November the first? I mean, are we rushing on times? Do we have a deadline? I, I think we should allow more times and to encourage more submittals of, of the, the designs. I'd like to sponsor three hundred dollars personally for the one that was chosen and used.
Have you received any already?
No, none, none as of yet, just a lot of calls.
Yeah, I don't think you can tell how long it's been going on.
It's actually been advertised for almost, I'm thinking, almost two months, so it's not like it just, just, just started.
And some of the schools are working on it, though, right? Aren't there some of the colleges that?
Uh, HCC and in landscape architect, uh, programs throughout the state of Texas.
I think, I, I, I think that, um, we have never authorized this as a council. We've talked about it. I think we do need to rein this in.
And in addition to that, I've just numerous artists, people I've come in contact with in the last three years that have an interest in things like this. I've received many calls and emails about it, some from, one from Canada, an artist from West Virginia that deals in granite is gonna, said he was gonna submit a submittal. And I asked him, how did you hear about this from Canada and from West Virginia? And their reply was they Googled "public art competitions," and we surfaced on that. Going forward, the submission deadline is November 1st. The Veterans Memorial Committee will meet shortly after that and review the submittals. We look to select a selection committee to finalize and pick a winner. We'll select a winning design in December and from there, fundraising efforts will begin.
Why does it have to be so soon, November the 1st? I mean, are we rushing on times, or we have a deadline? I think we should allow more times and to encourage more submittals of the designs. I'd like to sponsor $300, personally, for the one that was chosen and used.
Have you received any already?
No, none, none as of yet, just a lot of calls.
Yeah, I don't think you can tell how long it's been going on.
It's actually been advertised for almost, I'm thinking almost two months, so it's not like it just started.
And some of the schools are working on it, though, right? Aren't there some of the colleges that?
HCC and in landscape architecture programs throughout the state of Texas.
I think, I think that we have never authorized this as a council. We've talked about it. I think we do need to bring this into an agenda item and let's support the item versus having staff going out doing work and stuff, you know, and without the support of council. Not saying that we don't support it, we just haven't done anything officially to say that this is what we're going to do.
Can you accept this, city manager, as a request to put this on the agenda?
I thought we had something on the agenda.
We had a discussion.
We had on the agenda that we, that a committee would report back to council. Yeah, it was done.
And that's what it's doing.
But I have no, I have no issues about putting it on the agenda as well.
We can do that, but yeah, I mean, council's already taken action to say the committee work on this and bring back.
Yeah, I thought we had.
But tonight, it's not an action item, right? You just get was a central idea.
Oh, no, 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 this is strictly a report. But I agree with Danny, I don't know that November the 1st, I guess we need to see what we get by November the 1st.
That's not.
And I'll be afraid to extend that if we need to.
Oh, and we will.
And I don't think we need to rush into this. First of all, we, there's a lot of work to be done to fund, to raise the money for it. Obviously, we don't have the money for it right now, but there's a lot of work to be done and I agree, November 1st may be short.
Okay.
So just continue to accept it for now and see what happens.
I've got all the contact people, information of the people I've sent this to, I could contact them and see if they need more time.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
If extending it's a good idea, we'll consider that.
Do follow up on the people that we sent it to.
If you don't mind me recommending, just leave it like this until we see what happens in November.
Have any, any funds been committed to this?
No.
No funds have been committed to this, no. The council's recommendation, when y'all last met, talked about this was for the committee to.
What we said the last time we met is that the city would be happy to provide a spot, a location for there, and that they had to raise the money.
Right.
Mean and done, but not, but not this city in general. And that's where my misunderstanding is. And I think if the city's going to do that, we need to put it on the agenda. I'm not against it, we just need to get it in the right order that it needs to be in.
The issue that's kind of really that the committee has been working with has been, though, what is their fundraising? How much do they need to raise? And with just the idea and the concept of a memorial and nothing as far as we start locking down prices or things to show for fundraising capabilities has been part of the problem. And that's where we're, Councilmember Smith and the committee have been at least trying to come up with the design so they can go out, have something to fundraise.
I don't think council was a part of the fundraising. I think what it basically said was is that they would go out and raise some funds, we would provide a space for them in a park to locate wherever they want to put the monument.
The council did say.
But if the city is going to expend money, you know, then we need to get an authorization, that's all I'm saying.
Well, have we expended any money?
No, sir.
I don't think we have reached that point yet, but regardless.
We're spending money, we're spending his time, that's money. It's not free.
Wait a minute, I mean, we talk about a veteran.
No, we talk about.
I mean, the city should play the leading role and play the moral support to make this happen out city.
We need to make that.
I mean, this is the right thing to do.
Then we need to put it on the agenda and make that decision. I'm not against, I'm gonna vote for it.
Do we have, do we have what was voted on earlier in this committee?
Nothing.
No, I thought we agreed to go forward with what we're doing right now.
Yes, we did.
I thought we agreed to do that.
Correct.
We haven't voted on any, but we agreed to tell Larry to go out and put together something and bring a report to council, and that's what he is doing.
I think you need to check the minutes because that's not what we did.
Well, that's exactly what we were instructed to do from council.
And we have an item on here to report of the Veterans Memorial Project, and I think that's what we're getting. We're not taking any action on any item, but I do agree with Danny, and that's the only part I said, give it some, give it some time and I think, when we get it at some point in time, it is gonna have to come back to council for us to move forward on it. A set plan to move forward, just like we did with the protector's statue years ago.
And that was the idea with the design concept, is we needed something to show somebody.
Yeah.
Maria, would you get back in the minutes? Thank you.
Did we send out anything to the gentleman that the sculptures, did the?
Tony Sherman?
Tony Sherman, did we? Or is that?
Oh, he does, he does those. He does those.
If we haven't, we will.
We have.
Yeah, I think we have, but I think he's aware of it, because I think he told me.
And would you put it on the agenda to next meeting to vote for this? Then we don't have an issue.
How many veterans do we have in the city, Don?
They could have different.
Do you know?
No, I don't, but what we're doing is we've been redundant, we've discussed this. We've done.
Is, is the question from the mayor's attempt to, for a vote to ratify the competition?
No, if we're going, if this city is going to do a Veterans Memorial, then we need to say we're gonna do it. And we don't have, need to have somebody going, looking at something, then they can come back. We need to say what we're gonna do, and we haven't done that.
But we haven't decided yet, we're exploring the concept, we're exploring the idea.
There's, there's nothing, there is no budget, there's nothing to vote on right now in relation to the project, other than the ratification of the competition.
Well, I, I, I think if we're gonna go down this road, we need to be committed to going down this road.
We, that's a little premature. What we've done is following the instructions, the last time we discussed this, is reporting to council what has taken place so far. That's all we've done.
Larry, do you have any idea roughly how much it will cost?
You can't make a decision as to how much it's gonna cost, you don't know what the design is, you don't know where we're gonna put it. We have no, we have no details, Danny.
Do you have any idea how much Sugarland's paying for that?
And I don't, if, I was, hopefully it won't be anything like Sugarland's.
This was donated by the.
If you do some research, you should be able to get something.
Industry that convention in Sugarland.
Figures.
Not profit science.
One of the things, Mayor, that we're trying to do is we're trying to take it step by step and systematically, follow the protocol, follow all rules, but one thing we're not trying to do is put a value on this thing until we absolutely know what we're talking about, and that's, that's, that's what I'm trying, we're trying to guard against.
And I don't disagree, but if you're gonna involve the city and we're gonna take it on this project, we shouldn't be half-stepping, we need to be committed that that's what we're gonna do. I don't want to come back later on and saying, no, I thought you were doing a veterans thing, and we said that we will provide a space, that's my understanding. But if the city is going to be involved in doing a veterans thing, we don't, we need to be in it, you know, and move on.
The councilman, the action that we're taking right now is no different from any other action that the city has done in looking into something to see how feasible it is and see where, and come up with the details. Nothing has changed.
Unless my memory is wrong.
Check the minutes, Mayor.
The first time that Larry came up here, we field dressed him because he had not put it on the agenda.
I remember.
Exactly.
Yes. And he put it on the agenda and we discussed it. That's why I thought we were following exactly what we had done earlier. I may be wrong.
You're wrong.
No, I remember the same thing.
No, it's not, it's the same thing. Yeah, same thing, absolutely.
Are we not? And we said, when you're ready to bring back a report, come back and report.
Guys, before y'all talk too much, check the minutes.
No. We talk too much.
All right, but let's go ahead. What part of the report, you're through. He's ready for questions.
Did you get the questions?
Yeah. Okay. So we now know that, one, we're gonna put it on the agenda, some, whatever we need to put on the agenda.
Yeah, that would.
But we can continue to move forward with what you're already doing, what we, I think we authorized.
I'm requesting that if we put on the agenda, that we're gonna do this. If we're gonna do this, we need to formalize it and move forward. That's all I'm saying.
If it wasn't approved at that earlier.
And if, and if it wasn't approved.
It was.
I'll bet your money on it.
Larry probably fully remembers it, because he was here.
He knows the way.
The first go around. Okay. Any other questions of Larry?
It's nice to be up there on that mic, it's a learning.
Glad to be here.
Yeah, all right.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. We'll get there one of these days, we'll be honoring our veterans. All right, item six is the consent agenda, is our motion to approve the consent agenda as written. Councilman Emery made the motion, Councilman Smith made the second, all those in favor. Y'all voting on the consent agenda?
We didn't seem to get a vote from Councilman Alacat, sorry, I missed that.
All right. Item seven are public hearings and related actions, 7A hearings are none, 7B one.
An ordinance of the city of Missouri City, Texas amending ordinance number O-1010 is amended by ordinance number O-1121, amending and expanding reinvestment zone number six to encompass reserves eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, and 15 in Block Two of Lakeview Business Park, located in the Fondren Park, Fondren Road Buffalo Run area in the city of Missouri City, Texas, making related findings and providing for several bounty.
And this is a second and final reading.
And this is also the public hearing.
Ms. Ford, is that a motion that's in your district? There are seconds. Councilwoman Ford made the motion, Councilman Emery made the second. Are there any questions? If not, we'll vote, all those in favor, motion curious. Automated appointments are none, nine are authorizations, nine A is considered awarding a contract for the development of a small business program and procedures. And before Bill gets started, let me just say that in recent meetings with different other elected officials of both national and state, it was mentioned to us that we needed to have some formal program in place that encourages small businesses, minority businesses, women-owned businesses to participate in projects within the city. Don and I had an opportunity to go and visit with AC Phillips, who lives in Missouri City and who does this for a living, to get an idea of how the city should proceed in trying to develop such a program. And I think it's important for us because, you know, in next May, when we go to the voters and ask them to approve a bond issue, I want our small businesses and minority and woman-owned businesses in Missouri City to realize that they have an opportunity to participate in any project that we have in the city. I know that Danny, Robin, and others have expressed an interest in that when we bid projects out, that we make sure that we're in, that we're involving small businesses that are in our community. So that's where we are today. I think this went before the long-range plan or Finance Committee.
Yes, sir.
And that's where we are today, and Bill can take it from there. Other cities have adopted this. There are other forms that can be adopted, and AC advised us that in our particular case, this is a better form for us than one that locks us into something we probably don't need, right, AC? And AC's here, so I hope you come up and address some of that concern that we, that we discussed with you, but Bill, go ahead.
Sure. Mayor and Council, to accomplish this, as spelled out in your briefing, we have Mr. Phillips and his associates propose to do the following to review and document the existing procurement policies and procedures that the city undertakes now. We'll work closely in interviewing our city staff and looking at how we do things, review and analyze historical procurement patterns that have been undertaken by the city, review and analyze future procurement needs that include special planned activities such as a capital improvements or bond, as the mayor mentioned, would be coming up in the future. From this, a deliverable that they would provide to us, it's anticipated to take about 90 days to complete, bringing forth a program policy to address objectives that provide for sound purchasing policies, and it will include such items as historically underutilized business requirements and meeting them, and local business preference, which is something else that has been expressed by council as well. Proposed procedures to be implemented will be included in the deliverable, definitions from the plan, accountability and reporting measures that will be undertaken to make sure that the policy is maintained and objectives are met, and also it will provide a scope of the program and the certifications to be accepted. And again, we did take that to the Finance and Budget Committee, and they recommend affirmatively, and this, and as you said, Mr. Phillips is here, and if you have any questions.
AC, come up. He'll be the first one, he'll be one of those first small businesses that we utilize here, all right? Although he doesn't have a small business anymore.
Yes, I do.
It's a big business.
I really do have a small business.
Yeah, it's a big business.
With Mayor Owens, member of the council, it's, it's a pleasure to be here tonight. We are extremely excited about working here with the city to establish a program that seeks to ensure that small businesses, all small businesses have equal and fair opportunity to participate as you buy products and services. As I look at the agenda tonight, I mean, I see construction stuff, I see specialty supplies, even the VA, the Veterans Memorial item that you just finished discussing, perhaps we have some small businesses that can participate in that process. And so the purpose of our engagement, if you approve us, is twofold. Number one, the contributions that small businesses have made in America, I mean, it's, it's documented, I mean, it's fantastic. We honestly believe that small businesses provide products and services at cheaper prices in many cases than larger businesses, they're more flexible in their delivery of products and services. And so to the extent that the city can find the right ones, I think it really adds to where you're trying to go and adds to your business case. Second of all, by these local small businesses feeling like you're interested in them playing, it brings about a sense of cohesiveness for the city that I think can be anything but good as the city moves forward. And so I am a resident of Missouri City, have been since 1978. I've seen the city grow in a number of different ways, very proud to be a citizen here, and I do think it's time for this program to be formalized, because I think the great benefits are going to do it to the city.
AC, you might discuss, I know there's, for those that probably are not that familiar, there's a formalized program, I can't remember what the name of it is, but versus what you're suggesting that we utilize here in the city of Missouri City. What is the, what's the nationally known, huh?
Women, minority.
Well, there's several options that would be available to you. One would be to have a minority-based system, minority business enterprise system. There have been some.
And that's the one I'm discussing, that you and I talked about, that might not be the best one for us versus tailoring it to.
Yeah, there's, there's some legal exposure associated with those kinds of programs. It's been well documented all the way up to the Supreme Court. We're probably gonna be looking at the city having a small business program.
Right.
That also embraces ethnic minorities.
Exactly.
And I think there's a way we can do both. The other thing is, we recognize that budgets are extremely sensitive and tight, and so we also want to create some recommendations that don't cause you to spend a lot more money in order to maintain the system. So as the write-up talked about, having a seamless system, we want to make sure that we are not trying to add more people or more, you know, costly process to you. But anyway, we're excited about having the opportunity. As Bill mentioned, we foresee and exercise about 90 days. We want to know what you buy, what your existing procedures are and processes. More importantly, we want to know what you plan to buy in the next five years, because that will be extremely important. How do you account for who you're doing business with? And so our first phase is a fact-finding phase. So anyway, we're excited about the opportunity.
And developing some kind of a documentation system, AC, going forward, that if questioned about whether we're participating in that way, we'll be able to show people that we are.
Absolutely. Our final product, I'm sure, would be a recommended policy for you to consider to adopt. Underneath that would be processes and procedures that would be probably carried out by your city manager and your procurement purchasing function. And then certainly a part of that is a bookkeeping and record-keeping system.
Right.
Where you can constantly measure.
That's what I'm telling, yes.
Measure progress that you've made and cite things that need to be corrected.
AC, is it customary that a citizen small business advisory committee is part of the deliverables or suggestion?
You know, you know, I think we're going to look at any and everything that can be done to promote a wide net.
Okay.
Certainly having a community.
An advisory committee.
Advisory committee, we've been a part of those kinds of things as well, they've worked in many cases, and so that, that might very well be something that would be part of that final process.
You know, Mayor, when I tried to ask the city to reach out to small businesses, I didn't mean minority or women. I didn't mean minority or women. I mean, small business, everybody, minority, majorities. What I'm trying to say is that from the day one when I was in this, I've been in this council, I just want, every time that we are bidding for projects, I just want to make sure that, you know, we give that equal opportunities to our citizens and small contractors. And I assume that it has been doing. And with our respect, and I'm not sure, do we have to go through this in order to ensure equal opportunities for small businesses? I thought this has been doing all along. So are you saying that we have not done that?
No, Danny, I think we've been doing it. I think we need to adopt a formal policy. Right, and we don't have a formal policy in-house yet. And I think what A.C.'s going to help us with, and he's done this for, I could name everybody that he's done it for, he's going to help us develop a policy, Danny, that we can adopt that ensures what you're saying. It's going to ensure that we, it's a small business inclusive plan, is what it's called. It's not necessarily just for minorities, but it's a very critical part that.
So you're saying that we need to have a policy in place?
Absolutely.
In order to reach out, to advertise?
Now, we need a policy in place.
I'm not sure, but I mean, everything that we need to do, we need to get a study, I mean, with our respect to you.
Sure. Let me give you an example.
Yeah.
Tomorrow, you got a meeting with the Chinese council. That really expands our relationship, not only from a local level to a national level, a global level. We also, we have friends in Washington, D.C. that have spoke for us very kindly and have asked for funds and so forth. We've been fortunate that no one has asked us about this policy here. So what we're doing is we're putting all of our credentials on the table to make, to make sure we cross all of our Ts and dot our Is and so forth. So that's kind of where we are. If we're going to reach out like you want to do to on a global level, then we want to make sure our policies are in place as well.
I got a call, let's see, what is it? Today's Monday. I got a call Friday. And I thought that he might be here tonight. I got a call Friday from a state senator who asked me where we were on our small business inclusive program. And I said, Senator, it's on our agenda Monday night. He said, you know what, if I'm in town, I'm going to come. So, well, Don is right.
The same senator called me a couple of nights ago, yeah.
But, you know, Congressman Green has asked about it. Other congressmen have asked us about it. I think it's something that we need to move forward on. Other people have asked us the same thing. And A.C. is an expert in this. He's done this for school districts. He's done it for, you know, ACC. He's done it for Metro. He's, like I said, he's got our, he's got our interest at heart because he lives right here in this city, and I think that's why.
In all due respects, Mr. Wynn, I have been in business 32 years headquartered in Houston, working in this arena for many public sector agencies. I can assure you that as we come in contact with all types of small businesses in Fort Bend, Houston area, they feel like that really there's no outreach to them and no interest as much as there are to larger businesses to work in Missouri City. I can also assure you that some large contractors that do business for other cities come to Missouri City and don't bring the same kinds of people on their team that they work with in the city of Houston because there's no formal policy as they are accustomed to. What we're trying to do is to first start off with a formalized statement that addresses the issue, but more importantly, the processes underneath that that address that. Even the advertisement of upcoming opportunities. There are certain small businesses that look at certain kinds of venues for advertisement. I'm not sure if Missouri City even reaches those, to touch those people, just to give them fair opportunity to know what's coming out, when it's coming out.
I think from the Finance Committee, I know that all three of us strongly recommend that we do this, even with all the good reasons. But I think the basic foundation really comes from some things that Danny has said in the past, some things that Robin has said in the past. And we go, well, we've done that before, and these guys don't want to show me. So now, we can formalize it, put it into a policy, and be able to have a sustaining track record for what we do. And I think that's very, and other cities do it. And so, in one sense, it's good that y'all were asking the question, but it doesn't change anything that you are saying. It's just that now it becomes a formalized, practical program, not only that we know is in Missouri City, we can also show it to other people. Right now, we don't have anything to show anybody.
And Danny, you know, in the past, you've asked, do we have any kind of policy in place that ensures those small businesses? And the answer to that has been, no, we just do a good job of making sure we advertise it. This way, we're going to have something formal for us.
Yeah, I think, you know, the intent is not to have an exclusion of other smaller businesses just because they don't fit into the hub. So, you know, I think this is meant to be all-inclusive of all small businesses.
Absolutely.
So, we're not excluding a segment of the small businesses through this policy.
Absolutely.
I'm not trying to downplay in your value, but, you know, I think this is a good thing. I know proactively, it's helped us to be in compliance in the future. It's good to. But my point is that there are some unspoken rules. You know, like, I mean, you don't have to have a rule to respect the orders or doing certain things. So everything that we need to do, we don't need to go out there and tell people to come up with a policy in order to do that. But on this one, I agree. I understand what you're saying. But my principle is.
I have a couple of questions. First one, thank you so much for being here with this program. Now, is your name A.O. Phillips or A.C.? Because it's written here.
Well, yeah, my name is spelled A.C.I.E. My middle initial is O.
Oh, gotcha.
So the name of the company is A.O. Phillips and Associates.
Gotcha, I just wanted to.
And I'm a junior even, so my, you know, my dad did it to me.
Sure.
I had two boys.
And his son is involved in the.
Right, but I got two boys, and I stopped A.C. So Ryan is the first one, and Rodney is the next one, yeah.
Sure. I have two questions for Bill, if you don't mind, Bill. My question to you is, were you a part of the Finance Committee? That's why you presented this?
Yes, while I was advising them.
Okay. And yes, you know, I heard some conversations. I too was one of the people that asked about this. So when we looked at this, do we had other contracts besides A.O. Phillips and Associates that we looked at this?
This is the one company we looked at.
Because the reason I ask is, it's, the amount requested is $17,500. So I guess the purpose of this whole thing is to make sure that we get locally. So we only had one local company, or is there?
We did not advertise it. It's a professional service or a personal service agreement that we would do.
We don't have to go out for any type of, we do not have, it's not a requirement that we go out for competitive proposals for professional services.
The other question is, you know, in order to bring this program, do we, it says under the accounting, special services and legal. Do we not have the expertise in here to put this program together? Is that why this is going to outside?
Well, the reference to special legal, that's an account name in the budget. So that's the only purpose that serves. And again, having a third party take a look at what we're doing and assuring that we're doing what we need to, to comply, and also have a program that is open to all, is always good to have that third-party perspective.
So I guess, is this company or this service, are they going to come back? And are all we doing right now is just looking to see if we're, if our processes are lined up the way it's supposed to be?
Correct.
Or are they going to help the small businesses in Missouri City to come forward?
Well, they will be working with us to, again, look at our policies and procedures that we undertake now with procurement and making sure that they're looking for opportunities where we can open it up and potentially reach more and improve upon what we're doing now. And then have a formalized process once they determine what that, what we're doing and what we could do better. They'll have a formalized process and procedures that they'll recommend to you in about 90 days.
For the small businesses?
Correct.
The other thing, I'm sorry.
No, no. So this is just to line it up so that when we have projects or constructions or what have you, what he mentioned, that can go to potentially within Missouri City, is to have that processes open? Is that what it is? I'm not, I'm not understanding.
Yes, sir, that we have processes that are in place to reach those that may not be, we may not be able to reach at this point and identify those and help us with communication process to do that and make sure our procedures reflect in a policy what we need to do.
And then this, under the 14 budget, we have $155,000 that's allocated for this?
Well, for professional services.
For professional service, and then it says $50,000 available?
Correct. And we're requesting 17.5 of that to go for this project.
So there's only 50,000 then?
Remaining, correct.
Remaining out of that. So this is a 17.5.
Correct.
So hopefully, that, I guess, because I'm not part of that committee anymore. So to understand this, is that he's going to come back with recommendation on policies?
Correct.
That what we're currently doing and what we're going to, what we should do in the future?
Yes, and what we can do better.
So this way, that can attract the small businesses? That we can get them to participate in a bid or what have you? Is that, correct.
He's going to do a little bit more than that. He's going to come back with a policy for us to consider for adoption.
So again, going back to Councilmember Wynn's thing, so we don't have a policy now?
Right, we don't have a policy.
The city has a policy related to historic underutilized businesses as far as going out and making sure we are advertised to those groups that is classified under the state, I believe it is.
Right. And that's a state statute as well.
So it's one to where what this does is, you don't have anything that really specifies small business. And it's one to where that's where Mr. Phillips comes into play to say, look, with the skills that he has, the work that he's done with other districts and jurisdictions, how can he enhance, how can he help us, first of all, develop a small business preference policy? But then, second of all, how do you take that policy and then put it into place in a way that it actually comes back with results? Because even with all the advertising we do, regards to hubs and others, it doesn't necessarily, you're not, and I think Mr. Phillips put it quite well, there are places where they're probably looking for those advertisements, other than maybe our website or other locations, that we could reach out to and be able to probably have a greater net.
So the list that the Assistant City Manager Scott Ulmer is working on from several meetings back of finding or identifying businesses that are within Missouri City, is that still going on?
Yes.
We have that, where people can always go and register your, if you have a business within the corporate city limits of Missouri City and want to get our local preference option, which gives you an additional five points, you are able to go online right now and be able to register for that.
So I guess I'm missing the point again, and I'm sorry for asking because I'm not part of that meeting. Because if he has that list, what is he going to do with that list to bring in the small businesses? I'm not getting it.
It's just another list that we can use.
So this is, this is another list? So he's going to come up with another list?
It's a list, but it's also a network. It's also a policy. It starts with a policy and works its way down to, here are the different tools that you need to be employing to be able to reach those small businesses that are out there in your community or the greater Houston area.
Well, what we're asking him to help us do is take all the stuff that we have and formalize it into a single structure. Where we, and we still may be doing some of the other thing based on what Mr. Phillips recommended us. Now, he's done this for school districts and highway department, and so he's familiar with the state laws, the state bidding, so he can help us incorporate all of that into a formalized program.
That's the key.
Okay?
A formal program.
And I don't think nothing really goes away that we've been doing. It just may ultimately get done better.
Singleize, formalize process.
And A.C. may come back and say, guys, you all are doing a great job, but here's a better way of doing it. But again, it's like Jerry said, we put it on the agenda. We adopt a policy so that when, guys, and there are outside sources that are looking at us. And A.C. can tell you those regulatory agencies come in and examine us on a daily basis sometimes, and they ask, do you have a formal small business inclusive program? Right now, our answer is, well, we got one in-house, but we can't show it to you because we don't have it in formal writing, and we haven't ever adopted anything formally.
We can tell you what we do.
That's what we're going to get out of this.
Right, I'm not going to be presenting you a list of companies. I may be looking at the capacity that you have with small businesses in Missouri City, but I'm not going to be, as a product, giving you a list of companies. I'm going to be giving you a list of recommendations I'd like for you to consider that will, I think, enhance your small business participation. Within the Texas procurement law, we certainly are going to make sure we stay within that law. But there's some delivery methods that purchasing uses right now to acquire stuff for Missouri City. And state law allows you to have some evaluation criteria within those selection processes that you currently are not doing that will enhance small business participation. It's those kinds of things.
Thank you.
Okay?
I bet Methodist Hospital has one.
Can't speak about them.
I bet they do. You know, I bet most businesses have, most large businesses have a policy.
Thank you.
Thank you, A.C.
Thank you.
Is there a motion? Is there a motion, Ms. Smith?
Second.
Mr. Councilman Smith made the motion. Councilman Wynn made the second. All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Item 10, our ordinance is 10A.
An ordinance is city of Missouri City, Texas authorizing the crediting of updated service credits in the Texas municipal retirement system for certain city of Missouri City employees who have membership in such system, providing for increased annuities for certain city of Missouri City retirees and beneficiaries of deceased retirees, providing for appeal, providing an effective date, and providing for severability.
Yes?
Mayor and council, this item is something we started three years ago when the recession was right upon us and we were looking for ways, budget issues. And it was a way to bring about a million dollars into the budget. And so, we elected to go from repeating credits for COLAs and updated service credits for our pension plan, our retirement plan, and reduce that amount from approximately 15 or 16% down to 5%. And this, in order to do that, you have to go every year, bring an ordinance back that Ad Hoc elects to do that. And that's what we're doing tonight.
We'll do that.
Mayor Proton White made a motion. Councilman Smith made a second. Any discussion? Not, we'll vote all those in favor. Motion carries. Item 11, a resolutions. Item 11A is considered a resolution of the city of Missouri City, Texas amending the fee schedule for utilities.
Evening, Mayor, Council. Today I bring forth to you is to revise the GRP pumpage fee from the current rate of $1.40 to $1.65. We will be looking to increase that rate, looking at the end of this calendar year, so beginning January 1 of next year. And this is needed to continue to fund and maintain the surface water plan and the infrastructure to meet mandated unfunded requirements by Fort Ben, Subsidence District, you know, put it in that way. And so, this covers all the costs associated with that plant and the operations associated with that.
And what is the increase, again, the per individual household, so that they understand it?
Per individual household, based on 10,000 gallons of water usage, it'll be a $2.25 per month increase. That's what we pass to the MUDs directly from.
And I think it's important that we continue to point out that this is something that we're mandated. I mean, it's not anything that's on our wish list we want to do. We didn't ask to build that plant either. You know, we were mandated to do it 11 years ago, 12 years ago, so.
Mayor and council, a number that needs to be mentioned is the disincentive fee. We're mandated to meet a 30% conversion of surface water today due to the downturn in the housing market that we experienced over the last few years. We're not quite at that 30%. We're more about 23% to 25%, depending upon what month that you're looking at. If we would end up having to pay the disincentive fee, which is about $6.50 per thousand gallon, this is a 25 cent per thousand gallon use. You're looking at about a 1.96 million dollar a year disincentive fee that we would be paying instead of this.
And let me add to that, Mayor and council. And let me add to that, Mayor and Council, is that it would be, that disincentive fee is not paid by the GRP. It's paid by the entire GRP future.
Exactly.
All the city residents and ETJ would be paying that disincentive fee. So this helps us to be able to fund our projects also then therefore meet that 30% requirement by 2014 well permit.
So how close are we to the 30%?
We are currently at 23% right now. And due to the performer that was done back in '09, we are expecting further and faster housing development to the south of us in that Hillwood area now, as it's called. But that has not been happening, so now we're having to look towards other areas to conform.
Are there any other, there are at least two MUDs that are kind of close that could be converted?
Yeah, we run the numbers on different MUDs. We took a look at going to the 47, 48 area. The problem with that area is we don't have enough rooftops in there to meet the 30% criteria. It's also a greater cost than going to the Riverstone area. So the current plan to reach that 30% is to lay additional transmission lines to the Riverstone area out there.
And what about the areas in, in the Missouri City Service Area?
That starts again getting into cost, yes, it is possible. But it starts getting into additional costs versus a relatively undeveloped area and an area that was always planned for conversion. For example, we've looked at 47, 48, MUDs 23, 24, even though they're not in the city limits, they are part of our GRP on that. We run into 11 to 14 million dollar costs for that. Then you can start looking at the MUD 9 area, MUD 46 area. Since they're tied in to Riverstone, logically, they would be next after the Riverstone area.
They in Hillwood.
Out there, I remember.
Okay. Move to that.
Second.
You know, even though this project is mandated, but we are way ahead of schedule. And at TML, I saw they recognize cities that are ahead of the schedules. So I think, Maria, I think we should submit for next year that we should be recognized.
Well, there's some that are fighting it. Couple of them I know of.
Yes, sir.
Oh, yeah, in court.
Yeah, yeah, they're.
In this record?
Yeah, they're challenging what Fort Bend Subsidence District says, but. It's an idea. We did our part anyway.
Absolutely. We'll take a look at this.
Any other questions?
On budget.
If not, Councilman, I said Mayor Pro Tim White made the motion, Councilman Smith made the second. All those in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Any City Council announcements?
Yeah, I got one, Mayor.
Okay.
We're in the planning stages of putting together a community bike ride.
Okay, that's bicycle.
And bicycle. And we, the, the scheduled date is January Sunday in December. We anticipating somewhere in the neighborhood of 40 or so riders because we, we thought we'll keep it down to a minimum at this point and then make it an annual affair. Hopefully, next year, it'll be sometime in October when the weather cools down. But we expecting a pretty good turnout. So far, to help us with this collaboration is Sugar Cycles, which is on Highway 6. I've talked to Don Leonetti and he's an avid bike rider and he plans to be a part of it. Senator Rodney Ellis is a bike rider and he plans to be a part of it. And you'd be surprised the number of bike riders here in Missouri City. My, my dream one day is to have a bike path that we can go all over the city of Missouri City without interacting with, with heavy traffic. I'm looking forward to this, this, this first annual bike ride. And I suggest that, and ask that, within the next couple of weeks or so, if you get out that old bike, haul it up, put some intuitions in it and come and join us. The incident of the mayor has agreed to, to participate as well.
You can ride a bicycle?
So we want to make it a.
I ride seven miles.
We want to make it a pretty good event. You will see advertisements, advertisements going up within the next few days.
Yeah, very good.
I wanted to mention, Danny and I was sitting at TML and watching all the awards that the different cities were getting. And I know, I know that, that City Manager Bruce Art came in, was been real busy ever since he got here. But maybe he can find some time because we sit there and they had some good awards, but they weren't doing anything that we haven't been doing. I mean, we have done some fantastic things, including some of the things that Public Works get recognized, probably can be resubmitted, communications, or city center.
And we have, we do submit nominations each year. And this year, we also put a full slate of nominations forward.
Okay.
And so we're, we're just as good as those other cities, if not better.
Did we nominate the city center and the tennis center?
Nominated.
My goodness, and the fact that citizens voted on that?
But anyway, I just, you know.
Well, I'd like to add.
Know your heart, Mr. Smith.
A little bit to that. When I first came on council, Councilwoman Eunice Ryder made it understood that it was my duty to attend to TML and attend some of those courses that would kind of enlighten you as to how to, to do your job. And I, at the time, felt that she was pushy a little bit, but I was very grateful afterwards because there were a lot of courses that, that helped me to do, to do the job that I was elected to do a little bit better. And I, hopefully, that tradition will, will carry on. There are a lot of information, good information that you can gain. And, and just the idea of interacting with fellow council people who have endured the same type of problems and come up with solutions to keep, maybe keep you from reinventing the wheel, so to speak. So I encourage that we all attend some TML whenever we can.
Was there one in particular that you liked?
Retail Association was good.
Yeah, I, I, I enjoyed the one about why sit in the back row when you can, when you can sit in the front row.
You went to church, you had to, at the TML.
At the TML. And, and also how to, how to handle adversity in a dignified way. I'm cleaning it up a little bit.
Yeah, you are. Yeah.
But those, that was, both of those were good.
Mayor, I had one from HGAC. They've got a program that they've sponsored for a number of years. It's Teens Behind the Wheel.
Yeah. And it's a program that's in, or last year was in at least five of the Missouri City schools. And HGAC provides the, the administration and all of the printed material that, that goes to the schools. And they have to have a sponsor at the school. And so far this year, there's only two of those five that have asked to, to re-up. So I reached out to, to Joel, our, our chief, and asked him if he would work with, with those folks at the school to make sure that they know that that program's available and that we could continue to have, you know, not only five, but maybe some other schools that could participate in that. And he is going to reach out, I think, to the Fort Bend ISD, his counterpart, to, to work on that. One of the things that they have as an integral part of that program is the texting while driving, the, the dangerous situations that, that you might run into when you have. So that's an integral part of that program. So I, it's something I know that we've, we've pushed here in Missouri City. So I think it's well worth the, the effort of our folks to get out there and make sure that the schools know it's available again this year and get them to subscribe to that program, so.
How about our fill the squad?
That's starting up now. Probably starts, I guess, maybe really in full swing in a couple of weeks. And I don't think, I don't see a mic around here. But it's the Saturday before Thanksgiving, we'll be, we'll be stuffing the squad car and fire truck. We're adding a fire truck to stuff as well this year. So, or multiple fire trucks, depending on number of canned foods and other items that are donated.
And when's our, was it this week? When is our drug drive?
This Saturday.
This Saturday, citizens can bring expired drugs to the PD and drop those off rather than flushing them down the commode, which we're asking you not to do because that gets in your water supply, believe it or not, or throw them away in the trade. Bring them to the PD. Although there is a container at PD that's there all the time in the lobby of PD that if people have expired medications, they can actually bring them there to PD and drop them in that box. But this is a drive specifically to, to make people aware of it. And I assume our new fire truck will be outfitted and in service, or is it in service already? We have a new fire truck that goes to the Sienna Station. And if you've not seen it, it's a little different. The paint scheme on it has more white on it than red. I know that week before last, they delivered pizza to people's houses that called in and ordered pizza.
Now, that was especially with Domino's. That's not just something we're doing on the side.
Domino's did it. And when they went to deliver the pizza, they had to allow them to inspect their house and look at their smoke detectors. If they didn't have smoke detectors, Domino's furnished, paid, I guess, for the smoke detectors. And we installed those in people's houses. So I guess it's a little bit of a surprise to see a fire truck deliver a pizza, but it got, got it out there. If you've not seen it, it's a nice looking $600,000 piece of equipment. Yeah, so.
Treats in the park as well as this Saturday?
Treats in the park, right?
At Buffalo Run Park.
In Buffalo Run Park. So most of you, if you have kids or want to come out and trick or treat, see all the scary people hiding in the woods, it's a great event, so, other than you. We oppose the executive session?
We do not.
We do not.